We're going to get started. It's very important before we get into the heart of the meeting that we try to make sure everybody's quiet because there's a lot of important information that we're going to try to get out to you. We asked FEMA to do this town hall for them because we had so many people who were making complaints about receiving low offers or being denied on claims. And we want to make sure that the Pike County Fiscal Court's doing everything in our power to make sure that your claims are processed timely and they're processed properly. Now, as many of you know, Governor Beshear has publicly called to task FEMA on the number of denials that have been received. During this meeting, we do have three members of our legislative delegation here. We have Senator Philip Wheeler, we have Representative John Blanton, and Representative Angie Hatton. We have Commissioner Brian Booth, we have Commissioner Jason Tackett, we have Nee Jackson, who's our Emergency Management Director. We also have Fabian Little and Samantha Maynard here from the Road Department. We have Danny Michael Newsom, who is with a board member at the Pike County Housing Authority. So if you have questions for any of those folks, we're all going to be around for a while. But I know a lot of you are very upset and frustrated. But please try to hold that in, try to be respectful because we have had a lot of cooperation from FEMA to this point. We need their help, and we're going to do what we have to do to make sure that FEMA fulfills its obligations. One of the big issues that came up after the storm was the number of private bridges and drains that were impacted. Historically, FEMA has not covered those. I reached out to a representative from the Biden Administration, spoke to the governor, talked to some other folks at FEMA, and they have agreed to cover bridges because that is part of the structure of the home. You can't get across your bridge, you can't get into your home. A lot of people have been denied because they marked on their petition or their application they had no structural damage to their home. That was pretty much an automatic denial. Some of those issues are going to have to be worked through. There's another question about whether private drains will be covered because a lot of folks don't have bridges, they have drains. And many of you know how expensive drains are. Drains are very expensive right now, and we want to bring that issue to FEMA's attention. Again, we want everyone to be respectful. The folks from FEMA are going to take time to answer any questions that you have. As you know, we have numerous folks here who are taking applications, who are helping process claims. We have representatives from the Small Business Administration that is also making low-interest loans to eligible persons. Before we get into the individual remarks from our legislative delegation, I do want to just point out something that I think people need to know. We have a lot of folks that have lost everything, and a lot of people didn't have flood insurance. The Pikeville Rotary Club District 6740 will be giving out gift cards on August 19th, 20th, and 21st. Pike County will get $11,500. This will be $100 for a single, or couples, and $150 for families and children. It will take place at the Shelby Creek Fire and Rescue, right up here at Dorton, on August 20th from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. Shelby Valley Volunteer Fire Department Number 3, which is in Long Fork, that will also be on August 20th from 10:00 to 2:00. And then the Elkhorn-Sycamore Volunteer Fire Station, and that will be on August 19th from 11:00 to 3:00. So representatives from the Pikeville Rotary Club will be at those three locations and will be giving out gift cards at that time. First, I'd like to ask State Representative Angie Hatton, who represents the 94th District, to come up. Angie has been working tirelessly since the flood devastated our area. Of course, Angie's from Letcher County. I've visited some of my family in Letcher County, and you know, we had a lot of damage in Pike County, but Letcher County, and Knott County, and Breathitt County, Perry County, they were hit a lot harder than we were. And thankfully, we did not have any fatalities. Now, the death toll for the disaster is up to 39 people. This has been a horrific event for our region. Angie's worked very hard to help her district recover, and I'd like to ask Angie to come up.
So, my heart is breaking for every one of you that has had damage. I've heard the most heartbreaking stories all day, every day for the last 16 days. I know that you are frustrated. I absolutely share your frustration that FEMA claims are going too slow and that sometimes they're not enough. The first thing I'd say is that make sure that you file an appeal if you're not awarded as much as you feel like would compensate you, or if you're not given the maximum amount of $37,000. Make sure you appeal. There are free lawyers set up over in Whitesburg at Pine Mountain Grill. There's a clinic, it's been going on several days, it will go on for more days. If you have trouble finding them, or they're not there when you go, call me, and I'll make sure and set you up an appointment with a lawyer to help you for free to process your FEMA claim or file your appeal. But make sure that the first time around that you don't give up. Make sure you appeal. And I know how hard people here have worked for everything that they own, especially our coal miners. I know how awful that has to be to realize that the things you worked so hard for are piled up muddy in your yard or washed down the creek. And I wish that I could fix it personally for every single one of you. We're in every Appalachian's nightmare right now in that we're forced to ask for help, especially from outsiders, and I know we hate that, but that's where we are. I've talked to everyone I can about how the FEMA process needs to be faster and that it's not enough money. The amounts have got to be adjusted, especially in areas like this where hardly anyone had homeowner's insurance, flood insurance, to cover it. So while I know you're so frustrated, please don't take it out personally on the folks who came here from FEMA. They've all been very courteous that I've met, and they're trying very hard to help you under these circumstances. But I hope that you'll get some answers tonight, and if you don't, all of us at this table will take your phone calls, we'll meet with you, we'll come see your damage if you want us to, and see what we can do to help. And again, so sorry this has happened to you, and thank you for coming out tonight. I really hope that you guys can find some answers.
Next, I'd like to ask 92nd District Representative John Blanton to come up. John and I spent one day out together in Long Fork and Shelby Creek. John, come on up. John has been on the phone, I guess the first phone call I had from John was about 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning on the 28th, and we couldn't ask for anybody to step up any more than John has.
Thank you, Judge, and my heart goes out to each of you. You know, I hate it that we have to be here tonight because of this occasion, but we are where we are, and I just want you to know that we are trying to do everything that we can. I've spent time here on the ground in Pike County and in Knott County, which is also my district. We have the highest number of fatalities for any single county, including four children. Everything from delivering meals on the side by sides of hollows to actually shoveling mud, tearing up floors, cutting out sheet rock, anything I could do to be of help to the people in my district. I've also had personal conversations with Senator McConnell, Senator Paul, Congressman Rogers about some of the issues going on with FEMA, about the time, about the amounts that were being awarded here, and also about the number of denials that's coming in. And you know, my heart breaks, it's been out, and there's been days I've had to just step back and shed a few tears over in the corner by myself when I'm trying to help someone gather what they can of nothing that's left behind. And we heard help was coming, help was coming, but we don't seem to have been receiving the help, at least we anticipated. So know that I'm doing everything I can to get the word out that the help that we were waiting for doesn't seem to have arrived, at least not in the form we were expecting it to. Also, I've had a question that I've asked myself, and I've been asked of others. There's a lot of donations going on right now for our region, and I have a great fear of people that's trying to take advantage of the situation. My background's in law enforcement, I'm a retired trooper here in Kentucky. And so I have addressed a letter and sent it to the Attorney General, asking him to look into every organization that has taken donations on behalf of the East Kentucky flood victims, to look into each of those organizations to account for their monies as to where they're being spent. If someone is taking up monies for East Kentucky flood victims, then it ought to go to East Kentucky flood victims. It ought not go in their pockets, it ought not go into somebody else's pocket. And I will continue to monitor and push the Attorney General to ensure investigations and audits are conducted into those organizations. Also, there are conversations going on about a special session, and it is coming. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, and it's coming soon so that we can provide more relief to Eastern Kentucky from the General Assembly. Thankfully, for once, we're sitting in a little better situation than normally financially, and we are prepared. We have a group, and the three of us are here tonight, and the judge was a part of this group as well when he was down there, called the Mountain Caucus. And so we're very vocal about what this special legislation is going to be about, and ensure we get as much funding in here as we can possibly afford at the state level to help as well, because you're hurting right now. And you know, we're all mountain people, folks, and when things get hard, we stick together and we help one another. We help our neighbors, we help our friends, that's what we do. And I know that it's very frustrating right now. On top of losing maybe all that you have and trying to figure out how you're going to start over, some in elderly years in life, you feel at loss, and you're frustrated, and you're angry, and it's all understandable and quite frankly justified right now. It really is. But know that there are some people that love you and are trying to fight for you every inch of the way, and we're going to be there fighting for you every inch of the way because it's the right thing to do. It's not a political issue, folks, it's a right and wrong. And right now is the time we all come together as Eastern Kentuckians, and we work together, and that's exactly what we're trying to do for you. So may God bless you. You've been in my prayers since day one, and you will continue to be, and know that we are trying to do everything we can to help in any way that we can. God bless you.
Thank you, John. At this time, I'd like to ask 31st District State Senator Philip Wheeler to come up.
It's great to be out here with you tonight. Again, I would like to echo the comments of my colleagues that it's unfortunate that we're here under these circumstances, but the fact is, we are here and we're here for you because we support you in this time of need, and we want this area of Eastern Kentucky, the areas that were affected by the flooding, to get back on their feet. The three of us, as we've stated, we're all members of the Mountain Caucus, and one of our goals has been since day one, since all of us arrived in Frankfurt, is to bring Eastern Kentucky back to what we remember, the place with jobs, the place with opportunity. And although we've had many setbacks along the way, including this flood most recently, I can tell you that I serve with a very dedicated group of Eastern Kentucky legislators who are committed to making sure that this area not only gets the assistance it needs now during these floods, but that it also provides the opportunities for our children to stay here in the future. As a Pike Countyan, I want to say how proud I am of our county government, what a great job that they have been doing on the ground since day one that these floods have happened. I mean, the cleanup has just been utterly remarkable, and I want to thank Judge Jones and the Commissioners for the wonderful leadership that they've provided in this. They've been out there on the ground, making sure that people have their immediate needs met. I also want to thank, you know, the hundreds and hundreds of people and the millions of dollars that have flown in here, that have been dedicated here for the cleanup effort. I mean, we've seen a lot of companies across the state send waters and supplies to the cleanup effort, and I want to let them know how grateful our people are for the help that they've given us during this time. As John said, we've been, the governor has been in communication with us since the very beginning. He has shown a commitment to helping this area get better. We've had several conference calls with him, and as John said, there will be a special session of the Legislature called in to provide some additional relief for the people who have suffered. It's never going to put back your memories, the things that you lost in this flooding, and if there was a way that we could do that, we definitely would. But you know, the Lord will not give us more than we can bear, and I promise you that your legislative delegation, along with your county officials, will stand with you in this time to bring you the help that you need. We're there for you, not only to listen, but also to serve. So thank you very much for coming out here tonight. I want to thank the representatives from FEMA for being here face to face to listen to your concerns. We hope that we see the help that is needed from our federal government come in here. I know there's been some frustrations, there always are, but we're here to expedite the process and to assist them in any way we can. And I want to thank the judge and FEMA for putting on this program tonight, and I'm here to listen to any concerns that you have. Thank you.
Before I turn this over to Tyronda Gibbons, who is the Intergovernmental Affairs Liaison from FEMA, I want to just ask, we've had some reports of looting, people going through trash, those kind of things. Have any of you all heard reports of looting or had concerns about that? Okay. All right, I want to ask County Attorney Kevin Keane to come up real quick and just tell you what the process is if you have an issue with somebody trying to loot, you know, going into your property, going through flooded property and so forth. Kevin?
Thanks, Judge. I'll be really brief, but the judge is correct. I know a lot of you are hurting right now, and we've been encouraged by the outpouring of support that we've received from not only our community, but the surrounding communities, but there has been people out doing some of this activity and preying on the abandoned homes or the homes that have been left while they've been in cleanup, and I have got reports of theft. And what I would encourage you to do, I've heard some complaints that people know who it was that was in their house. If you'll get that to my office's attention, if you know who it is and can identify them, we can go ahead and file charges. If you don't know, we need to get law enforcement involved right away. So if you'd reach out to the Sheriff's Office or Kentucky State Police, if you want to reach out to my office, I can help you coordinate that. What a lot of people don't know is it ends a declared emergency, that the penalties for burglary and some of these theft charges are greatly enhanced during a time of a declared emergency. So there are some teeth to this, people do need to be punished. Anybody that's preying on people that's going through what you folks are, it's a terrible thing, and I just encourage you to reach out so that we can take it to the proper channels and try to address it as it comes in. Thank you all.
At this time, I'm going to let Tyronda Gibbons open the meeting up, and Tyronda, I'll let you introduce your staff, and then after that, we will turn it over to a question and answer session. Actually, are we going to try to do questions and answers after each person? Okay.
Thank you so much. My name is Tyronda Gibbons, and as the judge said, I am here with FEMA. We did want to come here today to talk to you all, to address your concerns and issues. We do understand how frustrating this process is, especially after some of you have lost everything or close to everything. So please just be patient with us. I do want to encourage you all, if you have questions or concerns, please do not be afraid to come up and speak to us. That's why everyone is here, and I will turn it over to my colleagues. First up, we have Oscar Salvatore. He is with our FEMA Individual Assistance cadre, and he will be talking to you about the process on how to apply for disaster assistance.
Thank you Commonwealth for inviting us here. I know it's not the most pleasant way to meet, but we're here to. My name's Oscar Salvatore, I'm the Task Force Lead. We're here to basically provide resources, information, more one-on-one assistance for you so that way you don't feel a little bit lost in the process and the procedures. Basically, we represent the Individual Assistance Program. Individual Assistance Programs mostly focuses basically to help you at this point, your home to be safe, sanitary, and functional. Basically, what we'd like to do is get familiar, have you fill out an application, and kind of get you started in the process with FEMA. We first like to, one of the first things we like to do is start with the voluntary agencies. With the volunteer agencies, which is our partner we work with, the first thing we would like to do with the volunteer agencies is focus on, you know, emergency foods, shelter, clothing, and medical needs. The volunteer agencies are kind of the first ones that start once the disasters, and it usually ends with the different volunteer agencies as well in terms of long-term. Basically, what we would start focusing on once you apply, we know that you've been affected due to the floods, so we would like to start, of course, to see if we can provide assistance on home repair, home replacement, rental assistance, and lodging. As we start with that, primarily, it opens up, of course, a lot of different things. Once we have you registered with our program and you register with our, we want basically for you to get more familiar with the actual application and so forth. Once you fill out an application, we will have a representative or sit down with you to kind of do a thorough assessment. As you fill out the application, we would have an inspector actually go out to your home. The inspector or an assessment that will be done at your home kind of determine what damages did take place at your home itself. If it is, it'll come and take a look, determine what has been damaged, and then at that point, they will give us a report to determine what they felt or what resources are available for you. That is only the first step, of course. As we know, we would like to really fund you as a whole, but we will try to get as close as possible, as I mentioned, to what resources we have. Sometimes, as we hear the denial letter, what we call, which is a very uncomfortable word to use, but in short, it's not necessarily a denial. It could basically glean information, it can be an incomplete information or application. It could mean that not the proper documentation was submitted. It can be identification, it can be documents that we need in order to get the application processed. If in fact the inspector has determined an assessment, and of course you're not content with what the response was, then you have up to what we call 60 days to do an appeal. On the appeal, what we'd like for you to do is to get an itemized estimate receipt, which will have 90 days to respond. An itemized estimate receipt is basically you contacting, it does not have to be a licensed contractor, it just can be a professional or handy person that you feel comfortable, of course, that can actually come out and do an assessment. Once that takes place and you submit to us, again, it does not have to be a contractor's license unless it's, you know, maybe foundation, or it's really up to you at that point, but we don't necessarily ask you to get a contract license. Once an estimate that you receive one, we will submit it, you'll come on in, take a look at it, and then at that point, we will send another inspector out to your home to do a second assessment. And assessments can be done several times. We know that, you know, there are different damages where an inspector may not catch the first time, and hopefully with your response and those itemized estimates will allow us to kind of get, you know, more specific on the actual damages itself. We have different ways that you can work with us or that we can provide assistance. We have a 1-800 number, which is 1-800-621-3362. We have a FEMA app that is available as well, that you can go on site to take a look at information about the resources. And of course, we have the Disaster Recovery Center. The Disaster Recovery Center is basically sites that were identified by local officials that we can set up the centers to provide, that is local in your community. Basically, at the disaster centers, we have FEMA staff, Small Business Administration, the Commonwealth, and other agencies as well. It's more of a one-on-one assistance that we want to provide for you, not only to apply, but obviously to share your stories to people that are kind and caring listeners for you. When survivors enter the DRC, obviously, we ask you to check in. We also have immediately as you walk in, if you have any kind of hearing or accommodations, we immediately will have assistive technology for you, and that will help you with those that have sight or hearing accommodations. We have that available for you. We also have American Sign Language or other languages if needed to come in, and if that is a concern, we have somebody available to help you. Basically, what we want is for you to apply for assistance once you come into the center, review and update an application, explain, we will sit down and explain to you the letters and requirements, and we'll provide information or documents that might be missing on the file itself. We also have, of course, our Small Business Administration. Small Business Administration offers low-interest rate loans to homeowners, renters, and business. And then we, again, we have the FEMA volunteer agencies. FEMA volunteer agency liaisons are also available in the centers. They play a huge role in linking survivors with local voluntary agencies and basically the road to recovery, more long-term. After the visit, of course, coming in, we have also, we work very close with American Requiem, we're close with Crisis Counselors, who is Crisis Counseling, was also available that can come in and kind of sit down with you, listen to you, and provide that assistance if needed. And our centers, we just opened up about a total of seven centers now, we have a total of nine now centers. We have one here in Pike County, and we have in different counties, we have Knott, Clay, Perry, Breathitt, Letcher, Pike, Floyd, Osley, and McGoffin, and we are to open up other centers as well. So again, we have the 1-800-621-3362. We have the FEMA app that's available for you, and we also have the different DRC centers that you can come on in, and we will help you one-on-one. We have more information that we're going to provide for you as well. We have representatives here that will explain more in depth, because I know there are some questions and concerns as well, but if there are pending any questions, let me know. My name's Oscar Salvatore. Thank you.
Next, sorry. Next, we're going to have Rand-
Next... Sorry. Next, we're gonna have Randi speak from the Small Business Administration.
Good evening, everyone. And I am sure this is not the most pleasant place to be or to meet. And we pray that everything goes well for y'all. And the reason why we are here today is to give you the exact support that is needed at this tragic time of y'all. The U.S. Small Business Administration works hand-in-hand with FEMA. Why FEMA give grants? U.S. Small Business Administration gives loans. But however, I do not want y'all to be discouraged with the name "small business." We also give loans to homeowners and renters. Okay? So, the first thing first to do in order to get to our database is to register with FEMA. The moment you register with FEMA, and if you are not qualified for a grant, they will send you over to Small Business Administration, SBA. And we give loan to non-insured and under-insured individual and businesses. So, businesses can get up to $2 million in loan. Homeowners, up to $200,000 in loan. And renters, $40,000. This is a very low interest loan of 2.1% for homeowners, and 3.04% for businesses, and 1.84% for nonprofit organizations. So, our mission is really to get you back on your feet, to be able to be whoever you are, the business has to keep running. Our mission is to put you back on track. So, we are here today. I have with me Mr. Andrew and Ms. Laurie Dana over there, that will be attending to individuals to give information about the loan. Also, whichever amount of money that you are being approved of, you are qualified for an additional 20% for mitigation. So, this is used for you on mitigations to prevent another occurrences in future. And we do have business recovery centers in Clay County, Letcher, Pike. And we are everywhere you find FEMA, in all of the DRCs. We have our customer service representatives over there to help you with the loan. If you are unable to get your application done online, you can always go to the DRCs or the BRCs. However, if you are to try get it done online, you go to www.sba.gov/disaster. And we also have a phone number that you can call while our customer service representatives help you to fill up your application online. And that is 800-695-2955. Again, it's 800-695-2955. Please feel free to ask us any questions. We are here to give you the support. We are here to make sure you get back on track. We are here to support you fully. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Did you say we could ask some questions? Okay. I think this would be to FEMA. I'm the commissioner of this district, represent the people, and I've had a lot of people ask me a lot of questions, and we're just... We're gonna try to get some answers here. Thank you all for being here. And we understand you got rules and regulations you gotta go by. One of the questions is, is if people receive money from FEMA, and they appeal it, but it's put in their account, is that still... They're still allowed to appeal the process?
Yes. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Okay. It's on... Okay, yes. If you do receive any FEMA assistance, and it's not enough to basically cover the damage and disaster cause, you can appeal that. You always have the right to file an appeal, even if... Thank you so much. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, that's a lot better. So, I will repeat that. So, if you did receive ineligible assistance from FEMA, you do have the right to file an appeal, even if you received funds. And it was not enough to cover the damage and disaster cause, please, we encourage you, please file an appeal with us, because it is possible that you can receive additional funds to try to get those repairs done.
The next question is, is in this area, I think there's... What's been reported is about 75 private bridges, not counting drain pipes, that people live across. Some of the people has come back to me and was offered like $185 for... To replace a bridge. I mean, you know, you probably can't buy screws or nails. And what do they need to do other than, you know, to move on and appeal that too?
Okay. So, if you did receive funds, like you're saying, $95 for a bridge...
I think the $185 was offered.
Correct. What we do encourage is please reach out to FEMA, either going to a DRC or calling the helpline number, so that you can find out what those funds are for in particular. Because sometimes the $184 or $189 is for you to get a service call, which means you can use that money to hire a contractor, to find out how much it will cost to repair or rebuild that bridge, road, or home. So, that's what sometimes those funds are for. But in order to know that, because it's case-by-case basis, you please contact FEMA, or go to a DRC, or even talk to us here.
And another thing, I think Angie had mentioned that lawyers in Letcher County was helping people. We just need to let the people know if somebody's come to them, like being a lawyer, to represent them. Don't let them have none of their money or nothing like that, too. So...
I just briefly want to bring this up to everybody's attention. Now, I'm gonna get to ask a question. When you say that people are offered X amount of dollars for a bridge, I can point you to some folks here. Dr. Richardson here lost her bridge, was offered, I think, $150...
$132.
$132. Her home was destroyed. They offered her, I think, $1,065. And if those are only preliminary numbers, FEMA's gonna have to do a better job of explaining that to people. I think it's important, you know, this is a lady that's got a PhD, lives in a place that never has flooded before. Lost her home. The bridge is gone. And has been basically denied benefits. And this is a person that employs a lot of people, has paid taxes. And I'm gonna speak on behalf of a lot of these people. How many of you here are frustrated about what you've had to deal with so far with FEMA? So, I mean, the communication, if that is in fact true, the communication has been very poor, and we've got to fix that. And we'll work with you in any way to do that. I had another friend of mine that's a disabled mine inspector, former federal employee. His bridge was destroyed, and I think the offer was $158. A lot of these bridges are gonna be 20, 30, 40, $50,000 to repair. Of course, it depends on the length of the span and how much work it's gonna take. So, there needs to be some type of explanation when these offers are made. Lavon, you want to come over here and explain what you've dealt with?
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Lavon Fleming Richardson. Have a PhD and a master's and a double bachelor's. It took me almost five hours to fill out the SBA application with that degree. The FEMA calls have been, I think, 17 total, and I was told the last time that that was my final payment. There was no discussion. They told me I could do an appeal, but then they put me to SBA. And because I didn't close four clinics, and I had a negative tax return, the SBA indicated, even with a top-tier credit score, that I was denied the disaster loan. Because... So, I'm penalized for keeping clinics open and keeping people working. And $1,503 doesn't even cover the mold on my home. My dog is with me today, because we have another round of water-induced mold in my home, and it's sealed again.
On behalf of SBA, I say sorry for that experience, but we'll seriously look into that case. If you can find a minute to meet with Ms. Laurie and Mr. Andrew to give your information, so we can follow suit with you. We are so sorry for you to go through that.
But this isn't just about me. This is about my community. This is about every one of these people sitting here that are having the same experience I am having. It's just that I'm vocal and don't care to stand up and speak what's going on. But everyone sitting here is in the same situation I'm in. So, I think all of us need help.
Again, I'm sorry to the entire community on behalf of SBA. And to be honest with you, every case is different. It might look alike, but it's totally different.
But we all have the same commonalities with FEMA and SBA at this time, and that's frustration, am I correct? Okay. So, it's... We all have that mutual experience. So, hopefully, we get answers tonight.
Yeah. I'm sorry again.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm Laurie Dana, and I work with the SBA. And we are... We understand the frustration, and especially when you... In your case, where you have a good credit score and you still are declined. But everything is... You should really submit an appeal, because the applications don't capture all the information. And so, there... Everything is a case-by-case basis, and that appeal gives you the opportunity to explain your case. Explain what your particular circumstances that that application may not say, whether it is FEMA or the SBA. And I know it's a hassle, but if you're declined, take that extra step.
But it's also extra burden on us, when we are already burdened.
Yeah, I understand that.
You know, we're taking time out tonight because of the situation that we've gone through the first round. And we're all tired. We're all played in flood mud. And if we had that much time, you know, we keep on getting penalized because we got flooded.
Yeah. Yeah. And my heart goes up. I just wanted everybody to know that don't... If you get declined, don't take that as an answer. Appeal.
I just want to mention that we recommend coming into the centers. I know it might be challenging, some of you, time-wise. It's very uncomfortable to come into the center. But we are open every day, Monday through Sunday, Monday through Saturday, from 7:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then, on Sundays, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's a difference of calling a phone number, doing something on the website, than having somebody individually to sit down with you, to really review your case. And again, it's on an individual basis. We have to take a look at it. We have to... Somebody has to sit down, review, and kind of, you know, let you know what exactly took place. Again, we want to invite you to our centers, if we can provide assistance. I'm not sure where we are at this point here, but we have also representatives here that are here with the DSA. And we call them the kind of boots on the ground, the Marines that are here, because they're the very first ones that come out here when damages... What's the damage that took place? And they're here willing, able, and available to be able to help you to review. I know it might bombard them now, might make a big line, but we don't want to leave in any way to make you feel lost. So, again, we have representatives here. Our centers are available, are open all week, and I recommend you coming into the centers. Thank you.
Okay. I do apologize, because I just got thrown into the question and answers. I didn't get a chance to really introduce myself. I'm Andrea DeFradis, and I am coming from the Individual Assistance Department with FEMA. And as you guys know, for the Individual Assistance Department, we do have the IHP program, which is called Individuals and Households Program. I just wanted to add that in there. I'm gonna go into the program, but I see we have a question, so I want to let her go ahead and speak.
My first question is, how long should a typical FEMA inspection of your property take, per se?
After you register, an inspection usually goes out within seven to 10 days. The FEMA inspector will make three attempts to try to contact you. If you did provide a phone number, an email address, a text message, they will try all three, and they'll try three different times.
I mean, like when LeCanto says your property, when they're actually at your home?
The actual inspection, it can differ depending on the property and the size. Generally, the inspectors are just there to go over the perimeter of the property, go inside the property, and make note of the damages. Inspectors cannot go on top of roofs, or on top of structures, or anything like that. So, I do want to address the fact, because I know there's a lot of questions about the appeal process. Please do not look at an appeal as a negative condensation, because anytime if you get eligible for something, you can appeal for additional funds. If you are ineligible, you can appeal that decision with supporting documents. Sometimes, there are missing documents, such as a lot of people were affected with their homes. And sometimes, your documents for ownership might have been washed away. So, when the inspector comes out there and you don't have your ownership documents, it's understandable that was washed away. You're gonna get an automatic decision of ownership, because we need to see those ownership documents before we can even address any repairs to the home. So, please, do not look at the appeals as something that's negative. Just look at it as a process of trying to get those funds to you.
When the FEMA representative came to our home to do our inspection, she was there 15 minutes, 20 minutes pushing it. My husband told her that, you know, the roof had been leaking, and you could see black mold already growing on the ceiling. She said, "I'll put it down. I don't need to see it." She didn't even go in and look at it. He said, "Do you need to see the..." I mean, we took hundreds of photos from day one. If we picked up any debris, we was taking pictures of it and showing where it was and, you know, where we put it out for them to come and pick it up. It was very, very vague. She didn't really want to look at everything, and I realized it was the end of the day. I mean, it was almost 7:00 in the evening. But that was my only opportunity to show her everything that the flood had done, and for her not to take any more time than what she did. And then, to find out, today, we were denied. We had a bridge that's gone. It's the only access to my home. I was awarded, I think, it said rental assistance for home repairs, but it said no home repairs were identified, which completely contraindicates. I need rental assistance to fix my home, but you're not gonna give me anything to fix it, so... And there were several others that's this... I've heard the same thing. It's not making sense.
Yes, ma'am. And I agree with the way that you're explaining it. It doesn't make sense. That's why I encourage you to please come to the DRC or call the FEMA helpline, so that we can look at your case, and we can dig into there to see what's going on. I do apologize. There is no excuse for an inspector to come and rush through it, even if it is 7:00 o'clock at night, 8:00 o'clock at night. So, I do apologize for that, and that's something that I will, you know, send up and let them know. But as far as your case is concerned, please try to come to us, so that we can look at your case individually, and see how we can get you moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I don't know if you recall what Oscar said, but if you need to, you can request another inspection.
I would love to, because, like I said, there's no way she assessed all the damage that we had in 15 minutes. I mean, it's not possible. So, how would I go about requesting another inspection?
Please contact FEMA. Either come up to the Disaster Recovery Center or call the helpline, so that we can look into your case, and we can see if we can get that inspection going for you.
If I do have another inspection, since I've already received a denial, is it gonna take the... Up to how many ever days for a regular appeal? is it going to take up to how many ever days for a regular appeal?
An appeal can take up to ninety days as a standard timeframe. However, we do work as quickly as possible in the processing centers that we have set up to get those appeals going quickly and try to get those inspections back out.
Okay.
Okay, I did want to let you guys know as well, yes, ma'am.
Our community has another question, and I think it's on the heart of all of us. How did you determine our stipend that we were reimbursed? Because I'm one of those that got a hundred and thirty-two dollars for a bridge. How exactly is our payment calculated?
And how the payments are calculated, I cannot speak for that. But what I want to encourage you, a hundred and thirty-four dollars for a bridge...
Hundred and thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two dollars for a bridge. Please contact FEMA so that we can look into your case because that could be for a service call, meaning...
Does anybody else wonder how you got your payment calculated? Why you got the payment that you got or how little you got? I don't think it's just me wanting that answer, I think the whole community does.
But I can't speak on everybody's because you might have got a hundred and thirty-two and someone else said they got a hundred and eighty-nine. So that's why I'm encouraging you to contact FEMA so we can see if that was a service call for that road and bridge. Unfortunately, when you get those eligibility letters, it doesn't specify whether it's for a service call or not. You have to contact us so we can let you know.
But I did contact you and I was referred to SBA disaster loan.
Did they tell you that that was for a service call because usually...
No, ma'am, they told me that was my final stipend.
Okay, please, when you get a chance, can you come and see us at the DRC so that we can look into your case and see what's going on for you?
So everyone here tonight can appeal and find out the calculation as to how our coverage was determined?
Everyone can appeal. And then if you also want to get a copy of your file, you can contact FEMA and request a copy of your file to see what's going on.
Thank you, that was a community question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I did want to let you guys know about our Individual Assistance Programs, Household Programs that we do have. There are two major categories. One of them is for housing assistance and the other one is for other needs assistance. For the housing assistance, it does cover home repairs, replacement, rental assistance, direct housing, lodging reimbursement, and private roads and bridges. Now, for the private roads and bridges, I understand that's a big thing here. A lot of you will receive the initial service call and it may be under two hundred dollars. That is for you to go to find a contractor and get an estimate of how much it would cost repair or replace that road or bridge. Once you have that contractor's estimate, you'll send that in with an appeal letter. And then the case process will work on your case to try to get you those funds to help get your roads or your private bridges repaired. Yes, sir?
Yes, my trailer didn't get flooded, but it flooded everything else and I got denied. My driveway's washed out, don't have no vehicles, boats. Everything I had, buildings and everything's gone. So, I mean...
Okay, so the driveway is something like the road, the private road and bridge? That's something that can be addressed? So we do encourage you to file an appeal on that as well as when you're talking about everything outside of your home, when it comes to boats, we may or may not be able to address that, but that is something that you can appeal as well to see if we can address it. When it comes to transportation, that's another category I was going to cover under Other Needs Assistance, which is we do cover transportation and personal property. Of course, those are sometimes SBA-dependent, meaning you may have to contact the SBA to see about a personal loan and get referred to FEMA if they cannot assist you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And along with that category, with Other Needs Assistance, it does cover personal property, transportation, childcare assistance, funeral, medical, and dental, as long as it was affected by the disaster, generators, and miscellaneous items like chainsaws, for example. So we do encourage you to please get in contact with FEMA. If you have questions, do not hesitate and contact us. And then I'm going to give it to my colleague, Anya, and she's going to talk about the appeal process, how to contact FEMA and send documents in.
You coming up for a question?
I have a question.
Come on up.
I'm not sure how many has had the experience I've had, but I had, they called it a remote inspection. No one came to my home to try and determine what damages I had or anything. And I was denied. So I'm just curious if this is something standard for this area right now? Because how can they determine my damages if they didn't even come out and inspect my home?
Gotcha. So, excuse me. So we did start doing the remote inspections. Once COVID started happening, we started doing remote inspections. The inspector may have done like a video call with you. I'm not sure if, you know, your inspector did a video call with you, but if you do have those capabilities, they do try to do a video call with you. That way they can, you know, get a view of your damages. That way they can make a decision for that. So remote inspections is something that we do. We are doing in-person inspections as well. It really just depends, it's a case-by-case basis, just depending on the damages that you did report.
Okay.
But again, I'm here to talk about the appeal process. If you do feel like the decision that was made from that inspection wasn't good enough, I definitely encourage everybody to appeal. You're going to hear her say that a lot tonight, you've heard her say it a lot tonight. But definitely if you feel any sort of way about any decision, it wasn't enough money, you got denied, anything like that, I definitely encourage everybody to appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And good evening, everybody. My name is Anya Bivins. I do just want to talk to you a little bit about the appeal process. So for any sort of appeal, any, again, denial decision that you did get or if you were found eligible and you do feel like it wasn't enough funding for you, you are able to appeal. For every appeal, we will need a signed appeal letter that just sort of explains your situation, what additional funds you're looking for or what you feel like was not covered in your initial decision. Excuse me, you do want to make sure it's signed? Excuse me, I'm so sorry. You do want to make sure it's signed. It does not have to be notarized or anything like that, it just needs to be signed and dated by you. And it should be accompanied by some supporting documentation, just depending on what decision you are appealing. If it's like home repair, you may need to submit a contractor's estimate. Same for personal property. Just depending on the decision. If you're unsure about what sort of documentation that you need to submit to us, definitely contact us and let us know. And we can let you know what you need to be sending in for that appeal. In order to send documentation to us, of course, you can visit us at the Disaster Recovery Centers. You can fax us in documentation. We do have a fax number at eight hundred eight two seven eight one one two. Our mailing address is going to be to the FEMA's Individuals and Households Program, the National Processing Service Center. And the address for that is going to be PO Box one zero zero five five. That's in Hyattsville, Maryland. That's H-Y-A-T-S-V-I-L-L-E, Maryland. And the zip code for that is going to be two zero seven eight two dash eight zero five five. You can also bring documentation to us at the Disaster Recovery Centers. And if you do have an online account, a disaster assistance account, if you did sign up for one of those, you are able to take pictures or upload documents from there as well. So I just want to let you guys know about that. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep, go ahead.
So I'm listening to a couple hundred constituents, neighbors, and I can show you thousands in this region that has these same questions. And we appreciate an appeals process when we don't get. But why are we having to go through all the red tape and the appeals process? You're talking seven to ten days for an inspector can come out, ninety days for appeal. I've got constituents living in tents and in their cars. They don't want to stay in their car for ninety days to go through an appeal that should have been approved from the beginning. So I don't blame you all on the ground, okay? You all have to play by the rules that's set by your higher-ups. But somebody needs to understand that the process isn't working. It just isn't. And people are suffering. They're suffering. We had a man in Breathick County just in the past few days took his life over what's going on right now. I mean, these people are devastated. One person sent me a thing that he'd drawn up. He says FEMA has provided three things to us: false hope, red tape, and disappointment. Something you need to know about East Kentuckians. We're not asking for anything that we don't deserve and we don't even like to ask you for your help. But we're in a position where we have no other choice. And all we're asking is, we're suffering, we need your help. Don't make it so complicated that we can't get help. This process has to be simplified. Again, we appreciate the appeals process, but why are we getting the denials? If there is a denial, first of all, that's insulting to somebody, just the wording of itself. I know it's not intended to be, but it is, right? Secondly, if there is a problem with the application, here's a thought. Contact that individual and say, "There's a problem with your application. We need to complete this so we can get you approved," rather than simply sending a denial letter or a phone call. Let's work from the beginning to see that things get approved rather than this simply denial, go back and do it again. Let's work with these people, let's sit down with them, let's let them know there's a problem with their application, and let's resolve this from the beginning. That's what our people need. That's what our people need. We don't like asking you for help, not because we don't like you, we're just proud people. We've always stood on our own two feet. But right now we're suffering and we need your help, not denials, not denials, but we need your help.
I am a survivor affected by the earthquakes, Northridge earthquake in California. I am empathetic. I can imagine the challenges you're going through. It's not easy. We take very serious the concerns what you're sharing with us as a state and Commonwealth. We will review all that information. We definitely, leaders are fully aware. We were here for the tornadoes as well that hit out in the other area, which is mostly Bowling Green, Mayfield. I know it's a very challenging time. And we do take it very serious what you share with us. Leaders are aware of it as well, working strong with the state and I'm sure Washington DC and our different regions throughout the country. I know it's, I wish I can give the answers to you. I wish I have that magic pen to prove things, I would. But we are looking into that and I know you're going through a very challenging time. Thank you for sharing that with us. And our leaders are fully aware of what's going on. We always do assessments, we have different pilot programs. We try to determine what is working, how to expedite the process as well. So we do take that in consideration. And I'm sure we will be talking in the future to see what would be improved, what would be an expedited process. Thank you.
Is this the first time y'all went through this where everybody's been denied and nobody's satisfied and nothing ain't happening, everybody's having a town hall? Is this the first time y'all had to go through this or is this repetitive? Who fixes it, you know, who fixes this? These town halls are nice, but you've got people you answer to and those people are the ones who fix it. Those are the ones who need to be here talking to these people. And I've got a letter today, I take my son over here to the Civic Center, whatever you call it over there, and he got a letter in the mail that had three pieces of paper in it. When we left today, we had four pieces of paper. The last clause on this states specifically, "If you do not maintain your flood insurance for thirty days from there on, you will pay that money back." And then it don't say if you choose to not get your insurance. It says if you choose to send the money back for to send it to. And if you choose to send it back, that means you didn't get the insurance. And that means you'll pay that money back. And now we're going to redo the map. And now that it's got flooded again and it went bigger, they'll redo the map and a lot more people's going to be in the floods and all. Insurance is going to be that much higher. Who do we talk to that can give us help? You know, I mean, you guys' hands are tied. A lot of these people don't understand that. A lot of these people read that word and they don't understand how that's worded. Who do we see that can help us today, today? That's what we need as a community.
As I mentioned, we have representatives here that will sit down and review the case if possible.
Who's their boss?
Well, we're going to bring it up to leadership, that is why we're here. That's why we're working with the Commonwealth as well. We're working with the state.
We need the policymakers here that changes things because if this don't change, then the next town's going to be that much worse. If you have an efficiency program or something on there where you fill out and check off, it needs to be pulled out and used somewhere. This can be fixed easily, easily fixed. It's just an efficiency thing. It's compartmentalized, to understand that. We need the right compartment, department, whatever you call it. That's what we need here. You guys are trying to help, but your hands are tied, so therefore you cannot help us.
I have a question about the appeal. When you appeal, you just handwrite it? Do you type a letter or what when you send it in?
You can handwrite it. We will sit down with you, explain the process, explain what needs to be submitted, documentation as well. It can be a manual, you can handwrite it yourself. Again, we just ask, again, it does not have to be a licensed contractor. It's up to you if you want to get a licensed contractor. As long as it's from a handy person or from a place that has a letterhead and you can literally write it, but we'll sit down with you to show you kind of the process. We can't tell you how to do it, but we'll sit down and guide you what needs to be submitted with the appeal on the letter.
Okay, I have two. I got my message through the email saying that I was denied because it didn't show owner proof of my trailer, which I've been living in for thirty years. And I had the title and it has my husband's name on it. And they said that we had to show ownership by PVA, the taxes or whatever. So I went and done that. But another thing, they told me that I was denied because I refused to leave the home while it would be worked on. And I told them, "It's unlivable. We can't even live there, how am I refusing to leave the home?" I stayed with my daughter for about a week or so and then a lady offered to let us stay in her mother's house that she's passed on and they said, "As long as we pay the utilities, until we can get back on our feet and get back to our place." But the woman put in there that I refused to leave the home. I'm not at the home. I'm at a house where I'm going to be paying some utilities just to have a home to live in temporarily. So how do I get denied?
Okay, that could have been something that the inspector might have misunderstood. So what I would encourage you to do, if you receive the decision saying that you are not willing to relocate, is please contact either the FEMA helpline or come into the DRC so that we can go ahead and try to get you that initial rental assistance.
Well, I know the inspector said that FEMA won't pay if you're staying at a relative's or a neighbor's house, that they'll pay for you to go to a hotel. But I'm staying at a place that would be cheaper. The utilities that I'm paying will be cheaper than going to a hotel. They want me to go run up a bill so that they can pay that? I don't get it.
Well, with the rental assistance, if you cannot find a place to rent, like an apartment, then it is possible that you can go to a relative's house and you and that relative make a lease agreement saying that they might rent that room out to you for five hundred dollars. And then keep your rent receipts between you and that person because it is possible that FEMA may come back around and say, "Do you still need additional rental assistance?" And that's some of the documents they will require, is those rent receipts as well as along with the lease agreement between you and that person.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
If you don't care, when you're on DRC, just let them know that that is over at the Dorton Park. Yeah, Dorton Community Center, if you don't care that way, that they know where to go to their own.
That's correct, apologize for that. I was mentioning the different counties for you and discuss the hours, but not the location. The actual address is here in Pike County. It's locating at the Dorton Community Center Park. And that's one one two Dorton Hill Road, Jenkins. So it's roughly, I'd say about, maybe about half.
About less than five miles away.
Very close to us.
My question is to you, sir. You said...
You said, uh, we could get a licensed contractor to sign an appeal, or we could do an appeal ourselves. But what happens if we do an appeal ourselves and then you all deny that appeal because you said it was all right for us to do ours ourself? So, I would like to have an answer. Would you prefer a licensed contractor? Or would you prefer them to do it yourself?
Either you can do a licensed contractor, or if you know someone that knows how to fix it, just make sure that that person has their name, their phone number, and the itemized estimate of what it would cost to repair or replace, um, the item that was damaged. It doesn't have to be a contractor, um, licensed contractor. It can be someone who knows how to fix it. And as long as they have a name and a phone number, and they can provide an itemized estimate or receipt, then that's something that we can address with an appeal.
Yes. So, it does not have to be a licensed contractor. It's very important. It does not have to be, as long as she's mentioning, itemized receipts submitted. So, it does not have to be licensed contractor. Uh, it's not mandatory.
I'd like to ask them a million-dollar question. What are we doing to keep from this reoccurrence? There's one thing we need to do: clean the creeks. Clean the creeks. It ain't going to hurt the crawdads, the miners, the snakes. I had a crawdad in my garage. I took it to the creek and put it back in there. I have, years ago, in 1975, when I moved here, which I think this is a wonderful place, and there's wonderful people here. But we have a right to live where we live, as well as the animals and everything else. All we have to do is put a little D9 dozer in there or a D6, push it up on the banks, and let the settlement that has come down from these strip jobs, gas wells, logged roads, come up on the bank. Because if you take a jar and you fill it half-full, you're only going to have half the amount for the water to go in. The other half is full already. Push them up. The water will stay down. Believe you me, it, it has happened on Elkhorn Creek. I have never, in my lifetime that I've been here, seen the water go over the bank behind my house. It has cut. They wanted to cut every tree, from big branch down to the fence line. If that would have happened, then neighbor next door to me wouldn't have been there, my building wouldn't have been there, and probably my house. Cutting these trees ain't the answer. And leaving them laying on the creek bank, that is a bunch of stuff. We need to fill in these low-line areas and clean the creeks. I guarantee you, anybody from Shelby Gap to Elkhorn City would say amen.
Do we have another, more questions? Go ahead.
I've got a veteran. I've got a veteran here, and his house was in, it was in the flood, and it burnt. And how does he need to go about itemizing the, uh, what he lost? Were the house burnt in the flood? Yeah. I mean, he, he said he lost stuff from the military he can't never replace, and he, he just want to know how to get, get started up, you know? He said, "Were the house burnt? The flood, it flooded, and then the house burnt too. He lost everything." What does he need to, how does he need to go about that, uh, itemizing what all he lost?
Um, honestly, to itemize, you just need to make a list. You just need to make a list. And, um, again, for personal property, we do have to verify that with someone that, you know, can show. Did you already have an inspection?
I've had one.
You had an inspection? Okay.
Well, there's not much to inspect. There's a shell and a trailer there. Nothing left.
Gotcha. Yeah. And I do want to make clear that FEMA does assist with essential personal property. I do apologize that you did, you know, lose other items in the disaster. Um, however, we do only assist with essential personal property. So, um, you know, if you have valuables and things like that, that may not be something that we're able to assist with. But I, you know, make a list. Make a list of the things that you did lose. Send it in to us so we can go ahead and review that. We can let you know what we can assist with.
Are, are they anybody here tonight that he could talk to? Maybe put him in a direction he needs to go?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
Uh, Tyrone has one question that she wanted me to ask everybody. How many of you applied online? Okay? How many of you applied at the DRC here, at the, uh, Old Pallet Jack Store, or at the, uh, Community Center? Okay? So, what may be happening, how many of you who applied either, how many of you applied in person have been denied? Okay? Because the reason that that question was asked is, it's better to do it in person because the online application process doesn't take into account things like bridges and so forth. Uh, but as, Tyrone, you can see that it's not just, it's not just the people who are applying, uh, in, online that are getting denied, so.
I do have a quick question. I applied online. No, I'm sorry, I applied in person. There are several people who applied online. They got denials literally within days. I've been blessed that I have not gotten a denial yet. Is there a reason that the people who have applied online are getting denied this quickly?
It is a case-by-case basis. Again, I do apologize. And, but sometimes, some of those questions online can be quite tricky when you're answering them. So, that's why we encourage you to get in contact with a helpline agent or come to the DRC so we can review your case to make sure everything was put in the case correctly. Because sometimes when we're reviewing the cases, it might say that, no, you were a renter, but really, you're a homeowner, and you might have selected the wrong thing. So, please, get in contact with us at the DRC or the helpline.
Is there a way that we can voice our opinions on how the application process could be better? Because the questions and stuff that are being asked are not suited to these people who have been through this disaster. It doesn't answer any of the questions they have. It doesn't do anything for them. And how can you go on a case-by-case basis when you don't know the extent of the damages to the home just from the initial application?
Hi, I'll answer that really quick. Um, I don't have the actual answer for that, but there is a process that I'll talk about in my presentation. It'll take a really quick second. Um, but there is a process where you can file a complaint with FEMA, and that'll be a way for you to be able to share, you know, your frustrations, things that you are seeing that, whether it be yourself or your neighborhoods in your community, to make sure, hey, you know, this has been frustrating, not only for me, who may, but, you know, maybe somebody that you know that has a disability, or, you know, is elderly, and is, it's even worse for them. So, there is a way. I'll make sure we have flyers out on all the desks so that you have, everybody has that.
I understand that. But at the same time, there's been so many people throughout the US who've had these natural disasters, and I guarantee, these people are not the first people who have raised these complaints. So, why are they not being issued? Who do we need to talk to? There's got to be a better way. We've got people who've lost every single thing in here that they own. They don't have clothing to send their children to school on Thursday. You're denying them or offering them $100? How are they supposed to survive? If you deny them and you say the appeal process takes 90 days, what are they supposed to do in this 90 days? How are they supposed to survive? A lot of people in Eastern Kentucky are on a fixed income. This is, I'm sorry, I appreciate you guys are here, but this is ridiculous for them.
I would also like to encourage everybody to please take advantage of the local services that are available, such as the American Red Cross and Catholic charities as well, because FEMA is, we can't assess it right now sometimes. We have to do the process. But those charities and American Red Cross, those are the people who can give you that assistance as far as clothing and shelter and food right now.
I know everybody has a lot of questions about appeals and things like that, so I'll make it really quick. My name's Yasmin Austria. I'm a civil rights advisor with FEMA. And so, what does that mean? So, FEMA are, we go under the Office of Equal Rights, and our responsibility is to ensure compliance enforcement of FEMA and FEMA programs. So, how does that apply to you? So, our obligation is to ensure that every single person has equal access to all of FEMA and FEMA programs. That's our job. And so, when that, the key word for us is access. Do you physically have access to get to our DRCs? A lot of you probably know people in your community who may have a disability, who may be elderly, or their bridge is washed out, and they're not able to get to a DRC. Let the people at, the FEMA people at the DRCs, if you see anybody from our offices, when you call the FEMA helpline, let them know so that we can make sure that we send a team out to be able to address those specific individuals and populations specifically. We also make sure that all of our programs in the DRCs, our buildings are accessible. We work with all of our IA people, our, um, disaster survivor assistance. We physically go out and canvass as well, because we know that there are specific populations of people that are not getting this information, are not able to get this information. So, our goal is to make sure whatever barriers that are in place, that you cannot get your services, that we are there to basically ensure that FEMA is responsible to be able to go through the process and make sure that it's all equal for every single person that applies, and that you have the information and the accessibility to that. And I, like I said, there is going to be flyers on the tables. There are, there is a way for you to, to file a formal complaint with FEMA, and we, if you have that, that, we want to make sure that you take that opportunity to voice your concerns. And especially if you feel like your civil rights have been violated, there is a formal process in place, and we're here to help you with that. Um, and if, again, if you know anybody that isn't getting the assistance that you need, please let us know. Again, our job is to make sure that we go into those specific communities and make sure that they're getting the help that they need. And so, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Ma'am, I have one more question some people would ask me. Can they re-appeal tonight? They can?
Yes, even if it says a final denial, you can re-appeal. We don't reject that.
Okay. So, they can, they can go over here and talk to somebody and re-appeal their case?
We'll look at it. Uh, there's some, uh, programs. It is why we invite you to the center. We can update, we can review the, uh, where the status is here. Uh, we have to find out if they can actually review that case here in terms of the, the appeal. But I think it's best if they come into the center so we'll have more one-on-one assistance and really guide that person. I would recommend them coming in. You'll have one-on-one. They'll sit down with you, they'll explain the process, and, you know, basically how to submit the appeal. So, I would recommend them coming in, one-on-one.
Does anybody else have any questions? I want to give a couple numbers out real quick. If anybody still needs help getting the mud out of their house or cleaning up around the house, the Southern Baptist Convention Disaster Relief Team is one organization that we've been working with. If you'll call the Emergency Operations Center at 432-0210 or 437-4126, the EOC can put you in touch with that organization, uh, the Methodist Church Organization, a company called, um, Rubicon, um, and, or, uh, organization called Rubicon. They are actually going out helping people clean their houses out and so forth. I think, uh, Jerry, I think you all had some help. If you, if you need help, take advantage of it. Uh, if you need any other contact information, you can get it through the Emergency Operations Center. So, if there's no other questions tonight, we're going to go ahead and close the meeting down. The DRC, the FEMA office, we have made the Dorton Community Center available, and they will be there as long as, as needed. So, again, if you all need any help, 432-0210. Thank you all.